January 7th, 2021, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. I am going to call it to order. As you can see, we've already had some changes in the planning board. Our first round chairs, Scott Phillips has stepped down. Nancy Hafford was approved as the new chair in December, and I was the vice chair. Unfortunately, Nancy can't make it this afternoon, so I get to jump right in and chair this meeting. Let's start with a go-call, and I think I can see everyone, but let's go through. They say aye as I call your name? Bob Schweitzer?
Yeah, aye.
Canaro? Canaro? Hartman?
Aye.
Scott, your volume is a little low.
I will try and talk closer to the mic. Wolfson?
Here.
Okay, I see you. Wayne, we've already spoken.
Yeah.
Einal? I see you. Perlow? See him? Warren? Callagary? And Johnson?
Here. And you missed me, Scott.
Who did I miss?
Mark.
Oh. You know, that's a problem. I was trying to be efficient, type it in and write it down first. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. At this time, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic
of which stands one nation.
Nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Given the events of yesterday, it takes on, I think, a little more meaning.
Sorry, I was having
I will try and speak closer, so my face will look a little big. As I said, I'd like to commend our former chairman, Scott Phillips, on his tenure. I hope Nancy and I can serve the board as ably as he's done. And on behalf of the current board, we want to send our best wishes to him on his future endeavor. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge that Jeff Mahew, the Deputy Planning Director, is planning to retire, and we would all like to congratulate him on his exemplary. I will read what the planning staff have written for me, then add a few comments of my own. During his time with the county, Jeff regularly displayed his dedication to Baltimore County as a model public servant and a distinguished planner. His career, his career has included managing eight CZMP processes and multiple county master plans, as well as small area plans during his time as a district planner. Jeff has dedicated his career to the planning profession, obtaining his AICP certification. Furthermore, Jeff is an expert in land use regulations, long-range planning practices, legislative processes, and policy formation. While Jeff's professionalism, professional achievements are noteworthy in and of themselves, he's also been a supportive and understanding leader, always willing to share his wealth of knowledge on county projects and processes, as well as serve as technical advisor and a major research resource throughout the county. Jeff's thoughtfulness, positive attitude, and calm demeanor has made him a valued member of the Department of Planning. Among all of his most endearing qualities, however, he will be especially missed for his distinguished dad jokes, which I unfortunately have to say I've never really heard. On behalf of the residents of Baltimore County, the staff, and the members of the planning board, we congratulate Jeff on a spectacular career and wish you the best in your well-deserved retirement and future endeavors. So, congratulations, Jeff. As for myself, this is my second go-round on the planning board. I've always appreciated Jeff's professionalism, his willingness to share what he knew with myself and the other planning board members, and it's been a pleasure working with. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, Scott, for your kind words. It's always been enjoyable dealing with, you know, the diverse group of the planning board and getting the different perspectives as the best way to move Baltimore County forward. So I've always enjoyed that, you know, the back and forth. And I'm, I'll, I will miss it. I haven't thought I would, but hard to sink in.
I'd like to say I appreciate your work with my short time here on the board, and you've always been able to explain sometimes complex issues so that I can understand them. And I appreciate your service to the county and to this board. So, thank you, and good luck at whatever you choose to do next.
Anyone else like to say any word?
Jeff's always been a fair and nonpartisan person, but a person we trust. Appreciate his leadership.
And I too feel very strongly, Jeff was very welcoming when I first joined the planning board, and he's always been very forthcoming and approachable. And as it was said, you know, he made it easy to understand. You know, there's a lot of complex issues that we've dealt with, and we're really going to miss you, Jeff.
Okay. I think we'll now move on with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Davis, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
Yes, Mr. Halupka, there's one change to the agenda, and that is our review of the November 19th meeting minutes. It was by error left off of the agenda originally published, so we would just like to add it at this time as we do our standard procedure for the board.
Okay. All right, so they gave me a script, and now you're throwing it, throwing it off. Do we have, did we receive copies of the minutes? Was that in our packet?
Yes, should have been in the December 29th email to the board.
Okay, those who've had a chance, I think I may have looked at the back when it first came out. Have, does anyone have any corrections or changes I want to make to the minutes? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All those who approve, say aye.
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 And anyone who disapproves has a chance to say, speak now. Motion carries. So now we can move on to the, what's on the agenda. The first item is we have a special presentation by the planning department staff on the upcoming Master Plan 2030. Please join me in welcoming Pete Gutwold and Community Planning Chief Amy Mante to fill us in on the Master Plan 2030.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Amy Mante, I'm Division Chief of Community Planning. I think that we probably last spoke during CZMP. But we're back with Master Plan 2030 is coming up, so we wanted to give the planning board just sort of an overview of how we're going to lay out things for the next year. We know outline what we see is your role and kind of give you just kind of just a quick little, you know, brief primer to the Master Plan if you've never been involved with it. That sort of thing. So if you're ready, Vice Chair and members of the board, we'll go ahead and proceed.
Thank you.
This is Chris. Can everyone see the presentation on the screen?
I can.
Yeah.
Good to go. I'm good.
Okay.
You go to the next slide.
Okay. Pete is saying he can't see it, that's why. Let me just
There were those gray blocks there for a little bit, but it cleared up.
Okay, I'm stuck. Let's retry it again, okay? Can you all see it?
Yes.
I can.
Okay. All right, let's see if Pete can see it. All right, sorry for the delay. Give us one second. Okay, apologize for the delay, everyone. We'll get started just in a second. And can everyone still see the screen?
Yes.
The presentation, okay?
Yes.
Pete, are you there?
Pete is, Pete is on his way. Hold on one second.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we should be good to go. Pete, are you there?
I'm here. You're good. It looks good. Amy, take it away.
Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? So, like I mentioned earlier, we just want to kind of go through and just give you a quick overview. We haven't gone live to the public yet. We're still working on getting the website up, which will be up by today, later today or tomorrow. And we haven't gone, you know, out to the communities and all that stuff, so we just want to kind of give you guys a quick briefing on what we're looking at for Master Plan 2030. So we're going to talk about, you know, what is the master plan? We're going to go over the framework, things that we have to address in this master plan, things we want to do differently from the last master plan. I'll talk about a timeline, give you kind of an idea of what our plans are for in community engagement. We still anticipate being in the status that we are in now. Everything will be virtual or online in some way. And then we know where our coordination is, both with the planning board and also other agencies in the county. Next slide. So for those who know, or I need a reminder, or maybe those who have not participated in the master plan, it's a policy document, and we update it in the county every 10 years. You know, obviously, we've always worked to build it on the ideas and input from the community and from stakeholders, and that engagement is very important. We've had folks reaching out to us, you know, over the past year, asking when we're going to get started. So I think, you know, the community is very excited to be engaged again this time around. It provides a vision and strategies for land use decisions and growth, and this is kind of an important point when it comes to the planning board and things that you guys are asked to review and comment on or make decisions on, such as CZMP. And it's, you know, it's, we tried to integrate, you know, all these elements that influence growth by engaging all agencies in the county that will, you know, have a part in this. They'll list those at the end. And, you know, also, the administration has set forth some specific ideals in the county's strategic, the enterprise strategic plan. And we've tried to incorporate some of those where we can as well. Next slide. So from a strictly technical planning point of view, you know, kind of the foundation of the master plan, the very nuts and bolts of it all, is the data collection, which we started. You know, the focused research, which is, you know, kind of getting going now, and that will continue throughout the process. Obviously, the community engagement is very important, and then, you know, finally, as I mentioned, we update it every 10 years. And the last master plan, the 2020 plan, was just adopted in November 15th, 2010. Next slide. Thank you. You know, one of our foundation elements is data. The county administration is very forefront of everything that we're doing. So, you know, obviously, we start with demographics and population protections. You know, we evaluate those things as far as demand on infrastructure. And then we kind of look at, at some point, you know, through this process, how this impacts growth and where the community's wants and needs kind of factor into that. Next slide. You know, all of these elements that we're asked to include in the master plan, you know, overlap in a lot of ways, but at the center of it all is land use. You know, the master plan is a land use document. So all of these elements, natural resources, quality of life components like housing and economic growth, and of course, infrastructure, water and sewer is always at the forefront of things, you know, as well as transportation and public facilities. But throughout those, you know, we hope to weave in elements of sustainability and equity and diversity and hitting on these vibrant communities. Next slide. One of the, you know, kind of crucial, crucial elements of the master plan is implementation. And, you know, the capital improvement program is at the center of that. As, you know, some, as I'm sure you're aware, and is getting ready to kind of be in your laps here in the capital improvement program is something, you know, every six years with public projects, infrastructure improvements. You know, it really is the main tool for implementing a lot of the goals and the priorities of the master plan. Next slide. You know, so as we go through, there are all these elements of the master plan. There's land use. And then, you know, there are all these things such as transportation, public safety, public facilities, natural resources, housing. From there to water, sewer, recreation parks, land preservation, economic development, all of these pieces we have to touch on in a way or another. And, you know, I'm sure as you're aware, different, different communities have different opinions about these, from the community itself to the business community, to developers, and so we have to try to find a way to, you know, figure out what the path forward is with 2030 and kind of bring all these things to the table. Next slide. As I mentioned, you know, at the beginning, we looked at the last master plan and, you know, tools that we've learned since then and things that worked and didn't work with that master plan and things that we would like to do with this master plan. We've talked about creating it as a living document, you know, rather than having this large book that's printed and is just the static thing, and is very hard to update if needed. You know, creating something that lives on the website that is a little bit more usable, that is a little bit more flexible in ways that you can reference things, that sort of thing. We also would like to include performance measures with the policies or the initiatives or projects for how the goals of the plan are outlined, and then we could be able to show progress in real time. You know, over the course of the next 10 years, what has been accomplished and what hasn't, that, that would make it easy to update that on the website. We, there are a lot of community plans, you know, in the county that have been adopted. Some of them are a few years old, and some of them are really, really old. We're currently taking a look at all of those plans, looking at what still is relevant. Some of those plans are from the 70s and 80s, and some of the issues may not be the same. You know, some of the issues still, you know, are important to the community. Trying to identify those and figure out how we can pull those out in the master plan and identify them and make note of them, and then bring those plans kind of all forward at the same time. So everyone is kind of back to a baseline as far as where they are with their community. And if, you know, at the end of the master plan, their community wishes to have more work on a certain element or a certain issue, you know, after that, we can go back out and start to work with them on those, on those pieces. And then, you know, finally, just to try to simplify, you know, the master plan overall, to make it a better resource as a reference document. It's always nice to have a lot of photos and have a lot of narrative, and there will still be some of that. But we really would like to take a chance to make this, you know, a little bit more of a technical document that is very easy, like I said, to reference, to look for implementation, to look for updates. Next slide. Something that we've also already started, we put out RFP for a consultant to do some research related to commercial revitalization, specifically to look at retail, office service, and manufacturing trends and the impacts in Baltimore County. You know, the pandemic, I'm sure will factor into some of this, but we really are looking at trying to determine, you know, where money is being spent in Baltimore County, how much money is leaving Baltimore County and going other places, and how we can, you know, keep that from happening as much as possible, how much we can look at, you know, where we, where we're losing, losing spending power, or losing jobs, or losing employment, whatever that is, and then how that relates to land use. You know, are we, are we losing things because we don't have enough land zoned a certain way, or, you know, whatever the case. Next slide. So this is the kind of timeline that we've put out, and it will be on the website of what are we planning for the master plan. As I mentioned, we've started, we started in the fall more internally with, like I said, the RFP for the consultants and some of our internal research with the planner. You know, we have to kick off publicly soon. A lot of our engagement, you know, kind of heavy engagement with the community will probably be more spring and summer. But we will be having, you know, kind of constant feedback loops with the, with the public and with different groups kind of throughout the process to the end. And so this is where we've kind of, you know, kind of set forth. You know, I think that there is a chance based on the pandemic or, you know, some of the technical difficulties we encounter when we least expect them, that, you know, some of the timeline might have to be shifted periodically or extended here and there. But this is generally what we're hoping for, and we are, we hope that the public understands that, you know, we're going to try to stick to this. You know, sometimes what you think you can do in one WebEx takes three WebExes instead, and so we're just trying to continue, continue to move forward and be as efficient as we can. Next slide. At the end, with technology and engagement, a tool we have and that we used during CZMP and we've used for some other current projects in Essex and Dundalk, Liberty Road, and Arbutus is using a tool that's based out of ArcGIS. It's called a hub. To anyone outside, it's just going to look like a fancy website. But to us, it is a website that has a lot of tools embedded, and it gives us the opportunity to do a little bit more creative things with engagement, surveys, mapping, that type of thing. So we are working on that, and when I say the master plan website, that's what I'm talking about. Next slide. So it gives us an opportunity to provide not just sort of the project information, but it gives us a chance to pull in data that the county has. You can go in and look at data that we have in maps. You know, if you're real, if you're a community that's concerned about a certain issue, or you really want to get down and dirty about, you know, you know, some certain policy or some zone and where it is, a lot of that data will be here for you to come look at. You know, background information, reports that we have. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we can throw at that. It will also have a calendar, so if you want to know if there's a public meeting or a special focus meeting, you can always check this calendar. They'll all be posted in this one place. You can always follow this website and get updates, but now if you always want to know what's going on, it's always easiest to come back and check this calendar, and that's for everyone, everyone to see, you know, and to be as transparent as possible, you know, what's going on. We also have the opportunity to hold meetings on the hub or through the hub. We can also post recorded meetings. So if someone could make a meeting, you know, say we have a meeting about transportation, or we meet with someone's community and they couldn't make it, we can put those recordings there, and so you can go back on your own time and look at those or listen to those. And, you know, again, with the input, there's a lot of tools. One of the tools we used the hub for during CZMP was the little tool where you could go and say if you were for or against an issue, you would go in and you could put a comment. That was a very simple version of kind of an input tool that still may be used in our master plan for something. But, you know, there are a lot more elaborate tools that we can use. If there's a very big interest in, you know, say sidewalks in someone's neighborhood, okay, we'll show Um, if, if there's a very big interest in, you know, say sidewalks in someone's neighborhood, okay, we'll show us on the map where, where is the segment missing, we can get really into some details, which then translates to implementation, that's kind of a simple example, but you know, it's just another tool that we have here. Um, and, and to the, the timeline, you'll be able to check um where we are on the timeline, if the timeline will be able to move along with the project as well. Next slide. Um, so all of this obviously is very important to the planning board. Um, you know, we, we use, you use the board um as sort of an advisory committee. Um, because you represent the citizens uh of the area that you've been um appointed for. And the citizens at large, as, you know, we know that you guys have relationships with folks. Um, you know, we anticipate being able to give you updates at regular meetings as to where we are, what we're doing, what we've heard so far, um, that type of thing. Um, and, you know, in the end, you know, it is your place to review the draft, provide comments before it moves on to the county council. Um, and so again, all this is, you know, very essential to what you do as a board because it's this guiding document um for decisions for CIP. Um, you know, only going to be three more years or so before another CZMP starts. Um, and, you know, the master plan is very crucial there as well. Um, and, and water sewer issues. So, you know, it, it's very important that, you know, we feel like you guys are, are in it from the beginning. Um, you hear it throughout the process, you kind of know where these things are coming from and what we've heard. Next slide. And so as I mentioned, um, we are, you know, working internally with um a variety of uh folks. We've kind of, we have, we always have a sort of technical committee made of agency representatives. And so we are working on um including those folks and, and reaching out to them and getting that started. I haven't, didn't update this slide, but, you know, we've also included the schools, the community colleges. And um also the county's chief diversity officer, um, who we think will be helpful um with engagement. Um, as well as the Office of Engagement through the county administration. And that's the last slide. Yay, all right, so that was kind of just a brief, um, you know, high level view of, of what we anticipate doing. Um, you know, I guess if you've got questions, um, you know, now's the time to ask and we will try to answer them or get back to you depending on what the question is.
I have a question, uh, do you anticipate updating any of the community plans or uh, I, I know you said some of them are pretty old, uh, so they may not, you know, have much that applies to today. Uh, so how is that going to work?
So that was our intention, you know, to first, we're going through internally all the plans. And uh pulling out, um, you know, policies that were in there or, you know, recommendations, however the plan was listed and seeing what does apply. And, you know, working with those community groups, we've kind of identified, you know, on the map where those groups are, obviously what their boundaries are, what the plan's boundaries were. Going back to those folks over the course of the next year, you know, spring, summer, meeting with them, saying this is what we've looked at, this is what we understand, you know, is still very important to you. Um, this other stuff you've kind of already done, or maybe it doesn't apply, you know, is, is that what you, you believe too? Um, and then we will try to have a section in the plan and the master plan that, that brings that stuff forward. Um, with the understanding of, you know, once we get the master plan, you know, if you feel that your plant, your plan overall needs some sort of update, then you can do it then, but we will try to bring as much of it into the master plan as we can.
So, so do you see that replace, do you see that replacing uh individual community plans? Like, I know there's a Towson plan, so do you see that, what, what uh is still valid in the current Towson plan? Do you see that being incorporated in the 2030 plan and then you don't need the Towson plan anymore?
Correct.
Is that, is that the goal? Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to chime in, but you answered the question, yeah. Uh, Paul, the idea is to bring everything up to a level playing field. Uh, even if it's just by referencing something that's recently done. And if we have to do a deeper dive, we will later on, so, um, yeah, that's the, that's the concept, that's the idea. So they're not all, you know, it, you know, 50 different plans is very, you know, that's, that's very tough to manage. So, and keep them relevant, so that's the idea. Um, I, I will just stress, you know, your role in this is very important, you're our sounding board. As we go through this process, uh, we will respond to things that we hear. But also we're looking for you to understand from what you know and what you hear in the years that you've spent on this board. Um, and I think this document sets the tone and the policies for the things that you do on a regular basis. I can't, Amy mentioned it, but I'm going to express it even more. You guys do an annual CIP, you do a regular water and sewer update. Those are things that you make a relationship back to this policy document and say, is it consistent with it? Not to mention the CZMP, zoning is one of those things that is, is implementing the plan. We, you have land use designations, you have growth management areas, zoning is that thing. The capital improvement program is that thing, zoning regulations and text amendments are all those pieces that are part of that implementing the master plan. So it sets the stage for the next 10 years, if you will, but the idea with here is because as we experienced this last 10 years and you're going through, it's 10 years old and you're going through a CZMP process, how much is that still relevant? So the other idea is to create this as a living breathable document. You'll start to see things that have been implemented and things that have changed. We'll start identifying them and recognizing that as part of this document, so it's, it remains relevant. And it's not this huge heavy lift 10 years later. It's, it's okay, now we need to update this thing based on everything we've done so far. And that's sort of the idea and the strategy. Um, and, you know, we're building the plan as we're flying in, as we always say, but I think, you know, that's, that's sort of the general idea and gist. And I've, I've, I've sort of set this, you know, in other, in other jurisdictions, this is sort of where I've been going. Have, have, have limited successes, I'll say, so that's, that's my two cents to everyone, but I, I just can't express the, the importance and of the role that I think you should be playing because of these things you do on an annual basis or every four years or whatever the case may be, you make, you make these decisions or recommendations, I say, to the council and to the county executive on, you know, very viable land use uh based information and it needs to be, you know, it has to be setting the tone in this master plan. So, you know, it's, it's important that you're, we, we play along the whole way, so you don't, it's nothing to surprise at the end.
Pete, Pete, I, Pete, I think that's a great comment. And the, the comment that I would add to that is that we couldn't have any document that's not living. Putting something in place in 1968 that lives today, as it basically did in 1968, doesn't make no sense. So hopefully we can look at this whole plan as a complete look at how to live, work and play ball market in 2030, not, not 1968.
Have you identified any new communities um outside of the 50 that you already have?
Defer to Amy on that, but I would say we're trying, we're still working that uh issue out, but go ahead, Amy.
So we have communities that we work with regularly. Um, and, you know, it is our intention to, to meet with, you know, anyone and everyone who, who wants to meet with us. Those 50 or so with those plans, we're going to touch on those groups specifically just to, to roll things from their plan forward. It doesn't mean that they're going to be the only ones we talk to. So we have, you know, we, we will, we will identify our, you know, kind of engagement outreach, that type of thing. You know, by the areas that the planners already cover. Um, you know, with, within the county, there's a planner assigned to, you know, some inch of Baltimore County. Um, and so we've got way of getting out to everyone there. Because, you know, there are groups in, in areas that don't have a plan at all and we would not ignore them because of that.
Then I ask because I've seen a lot of growth in the Essex area, uh, and Marshall area where they are um expanding new housing complexes and things are coming on, I just wonder what they part of. Are they new and will they have to be identified?
Amy, um, you know, the, the, the plans were adopted by resolution by the county council. So how will that be handled? If, if they're changed.
I believe, and, and Jeff or Pete can correct this, that, you know, when they were adopted, they're adopted as an amendment to the master plan. So they're kind of already part of the master plan. Um, I would assume that would be part of the further adoption at the end.
So.
That it would be recognized.
And, and that, there lies the problem, Kat, it's a great question and a great comment because, you know, as we go through and we're doing something, it could be a development plan. And somebody will reference, you know, a 1985 plan, you've done three master plans since. I question and then I, in other jurisdictions as well, people will point to these community plans where you've already adopted other master plans. How relevant is that community plan, right? So that's why we want to bring them all the way forward to say, yeah, is what's relevant, what's not? And we need to, you know, when they come up and they, they use those comparisons, we've got to say, I don't know how relevant the 1985 plan is when we've already adopted three other plans since then. So that's one of the clarity things that we're going to have to bring to light for everybody is that this is the time where we sit there and say, these are the things that are relevant, what do we get right, what do we get wrong? Because the new master plan will take, take precedent and it should have, it should have always, even the 2010 master plan should, should be the overriding document to any other community plan that was adopted previously. But that's, you know, that's sort of my mindset. Uh, you know, that's not, that's not written in law anywhere, but that's what we're trying to establish with this update of this master plan to make them all relevant at this point in time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Pete, this is Jeff and board members, when the last master plan was adopted, we discussion, we had this same discussion. And be, because of um how recent those plans were, or at least some of them were, there was um a conscious decision to move them forward. Uh, so if you look in the current plan, there's a section where it lists them all. And there's text that says those plans, even if they're older, are coming forward as part of the adoption of this master plan. Uh, so I think that's um why they're still in there today. Um, we're going to do, I think Amy's going to do a better effort to make them relevant, so we don't have those kind of plans that are 30 years old as a reference document.
Jeff, that'd be plenty of public input, but meetings wherever the citizens can um can address certain concerns and uh if there's a uh, a consensus, that's, I'm certainly, these will be incorporated into the overall master plan.
I think that's what Amy was trying to elaborate on, that we, you know, we do have public engagement built into this development and that we hopefully will get the feedback of what's important to them to be included in the, in the new update. So we're, are intended to do that all along the way, but as it goes through um, the approval process, it'll run through the planning board. And you'll have hearings and it'll run through the county council and they're, they'll have hearings. So it's, you know, those are the formal uh means of public input, but we intend to do that all along the way.
Any other questions for Amy, Pete, Jeff?
Is there going to be small groups that are going to get together on parts of this? And can we be part of those?
So yes, if the, if the planning, you know, if that's the, the wrap of the plan take, I mean, we can incorporate that into what we're doing. Um, you know, sometimes the board doesn't want to be that engaged. And I think we can, we can find a way to include you in that. Whether it's by topic or area, whatever your, whatever your interest is. Um, as we kind of finalize that engagement, community engagement strategy, we can, you know, let you know what that looks like.
Any other questions? Uh, thank you, Amy, Pete, Jeff, for, for that discussion, sounds like we're going to be hearing a lot more about this in the, the coming months and forward to the process.
Thank you.
Um. Chris, I see the next item on the agenda, uh, are you going to update us on recently passed legislation by the county council?
Yes, um, we can begin uh with, uh, there are several bills, um, starting with uh bill 105 dash 20, which is a zoning regulations bill, and this is for the purpose of revising the parking requirement for certain restaurants in certain commercial revitalization districts. Um, we have next bill 106 dash 20, um, which is also a zoning regulations uh bill uh for the B R L R zone. Um, it's for the purpose of permitting certain uses by right and by special exception in the B L R zone and in the R O zone. If located in the South Towson Design Review Area and generally related to uses permitted in the B L R and R O zone. Bill 114 dash 20 is a bond ordinance and it's for the purpose of authorizing empowering the county to issue, sell and deliver general obligation bonds authorized by the residents of bill 3216 enacted by the county council. Uh, in aggregate of a principal amount not to exceed $40 million for the purpose of providing funds for public works, including the construction, improvement and repair of public roads, streets, highways, sidewalks, bridges, viaducts, gray crossings and stormwater drainage systems. Bill 115 dash 20 is for the uses in the BMCT zone. And it's for the purposes of permitting ground floor apartments in the BMCT zone, which is the business, business major, commercial town center core zone in certain circumstances. And it generally relates to the BMCT zone. Bill 117 dash 20 is a residential parking permit area uh bill. And it's for the purpose of amending the zones in which residential permit parking areas are permitted to include a certain zone if the areas within the zone are in residential use. And generally relating to residential permit parking areas. Bill 118 dash 20 is a bill for the Department of Commerce, Re, Commerce Restaurant Relief Grant Emergency Measure. And this is for the purposes of amending the 2020, 2021 current expense budget by appropriating to the Gibson Grant Special Revenue Fund, monies derived from state funds and made available to the county through the Maryland Department of Commerce as a result of the COVID-19 public health catastrophe and public safety emergency. Bill 123 dash 20 is a COVID-19 CDBG eviction program bill, which is for the purpose of amending the current expense budget by appropriating to the Gibson Grant Special Revenue Fund, monies derived from federal funds and made available to the county through the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Bill 126 dash 20 is for the honey goat area panhandle lots. And this is for the purposes of amending the definitions in the zoning regulations of a panhandle driveway and panhandle lot. And for clarifying that the provisions for panhandle lots in the honey goat area are not subject to a variance. And generally relating to panhandle lots. Resolution 129 dash 20 refers to san, the sanitary sewer system in the Milford Mill area. And it's a resolution for the purposes of approving the extension of the sanitary sewer system of Baltimore County in the Milford Mill area and the second election district and the fourth council district of Baltimore County. Resolution 134 dash 20 is a watershed and protection and restoration plan uh within the Baltimore Financial Assurance Plan. And it's a resolution approving the county's financial experience plan under the watershed protection and restoration program. Resolution 135 dash 20 uh is a resolution of the county council to approve the continuation of a state of emergency declared by the county executive on March 13th, 2020. Uh, and finally, resolution 142 dash 20 is an endorsement uh by the county council uh for the Maryland State Airport Mark Station and the vicinity around the station as designated a transit oriented development site endorsed by Baltimore County, the Maryland Department of Transportation and the Maryland Smart Growth. And that is the conclusion of the legislation.
Anyone have any questions or comments about the various resolutions? Does anyone have anything else they wish to raise to the board at this point? Jeff, is this going to be your last meeting with us?
Yes, it is.
Ah, well. Congratulations. Congratulations once again. You'll be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do I have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the board?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll see most of you in a couple of weeks.
Oh. Goodbye, Jeff.
Thanks again, Jeff.
You guys will do well.
Now you can testify.
Right.
I don't think staff would appreciate if I was on the planning board.
No, come on, we have to forbid it.